Our first thing to see on our agenda is a waiver of water and sewer tap fees for Habitat for Humanity. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have the summary of the request from Jessica Priest Cahill, who is the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity. They're requesting a waiver for the tap fee. Mayor Tewalt actually informed me that there was actually a house on this property and that would burn down, so there's already one tap already on the property. And the request is to put a duplex on this property, so there would be waiving, the request would be to waive the $15,068 for the tap. Staff discussed this and based upon a prior, I'll say precedent, but a prior decision from council in 2014 was to waive the tap fee but put a lien on the property with no interest. And so staff was recommending to take that same policy up for this instance. But it's open for discussion for council, Mr. Mayor.
Any want to discuss it? What's your feeling?
I agree. I'm all for letting them do it. I still would go back the same way as previous council.
Doug, is that still be able to put that on the lien against the property, the one particular issue?
Right. They wanted to sell it, the town would get repaid.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Are we still, are we saying one tap fee or two now?
One tap.
Only one. That's been verified.
We have Ms. Cahill, Priest Cahill here. If you'd like to have her say anything.
We would appreciate if you're considering this request, you know, any of the funds that we are able to save, want to build, it helps the family and increases affordability for the family, in this case, families that will be moving into the homes. So we appreciate your concern. If you have any questions for me, I'll do my best to answer.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of a lien.
Do you want to put on consent agenda?
Yeah, I think so. Is that our, do you guys consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Our next item, item three is the improvements of the intersection of 17th Street and North Shandor Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, as the planning director, Jeremy Camp, and perhaps Robert Brown, they get set up. Thank you. Thank you. What we're requesting is acceptance of a donation or approval of the project implementation. Jeremy will walk through some of the suggestions there, please. Jeremy?
So first, just to give you a little background, this is a new Sheetz store. The store is a little less than five foot and a half feet. And there's ten fuel pumps, so it's sort of your typical Sheetz. Maybe a little bit on the smaller side, but it's still fairly large. It's located at the corner of 17th Street and North Shandor Avenue. Before you cross the bridge, across from Popeye's, and just over here is First Bank. Here's 17th Street. So it's already been to the planning commission, it's been approved. There's a lot of review and information that went through in that process. They did a traffic warrant analysis for stoplighting, for example. And there was not a warrant to have a stoplight at this location. So they did ultimately meet all the requirements that we had to develop the site, some commercial, some buy right use. And, but during the process, the planning commission did, they had some concerns about traffic congestion. And so the conversation came up, well, how can we make things a little bit better? And Sheetz said, well, we had an idea here to put in a turn lane on 17th Street, which is a fairly narrow street. And so this would be a slip right turn lane, which would separate vehicles that are coming out, that are taking a left, and vehicles that are taking right, which would help a little bit with the stacking and help to widen the street. There's an estimate provided in your handouts, a little over $20,000. I agree to pay for that 100%. There's a small amount of land here, but First Bank, that would have to be acquired. It wouldn't affect their site, but we need a little bit of more room within that lane. And we have a meeting scheduled with, well, tomorrow, as long as the council's willing to move forward with the idea. And so really what we're bringing this to you, bringing this forward to you is, one, to determine if you want to accept this as a project for the town and accept the donation from Sheetz to move forward with this idea.
Will we be able to do this in-house or will we have to put it out to bid?
The plan being in-house. We also, the slip lane is not, was not required by VDOT. It was an added option that the planning commission thought would be beneficial and staff thought it would be beneficial as well. Sheetz has allocated the funds. Is it currently in escrow or how's that?
Well, we have a draft escrow agreement that's in your packet.
Part of the packet.
And that's going to be reviewed by the attorney. They haven't given us the money yet, but they're waiting for council.
And we have, what, three years, three years to build it?
Two years.
We have two years.
Two years to build it.
I'm really concerned about whatever their start date is. I really would like to see that turn lane be in conjunction with our start date, because it's going to be imperative with this traffic congestion in that point. You know, we've looked at the safety issues all along as Shandor Avenue. And I think we ought to be in conjunction if we're going to do this.
That's a good recommendation. Gary?
I was just going to, Doug, as far as the land acquisition on this, how long do you reckon it would probably take as far as getting, because I'm with Mr. Seelock on this. I would like to see this done before their occupancy is signed off on by the county to have it operational. I know they gave us two years, but I mean, I couldn't imagine that the work itself would take what, a couple of weeks to complete.
Yeah, I wouldn't think the work itself would take longer. I wouldn't hope the land ac- I'd hope the land acquisition would be agreeable to everybody involved, but until I actually talk to everybody, I wouldn't know. But I think it would be beneficial to everybody out there. So I would like to think everybody would be agreeable and I could prepare the paperwork quickly.
So, Mr. Mayor, the purpose, the purpose of having this here tonight among just the general overview and briefing is for staff to receive council's direction. As Mr. Camp mentioned, we do have a tentative meeting set up with the bank tomorrow so we can broach the subject with them. We had hoped to have it today prior to the presentation, but they weren't able to get their executive in a meeting. But agreed, if council's intent is to move forward and move forward in a quicker as opposed to a slower manner, I hear you and I can relay that tomorrow. And, you know, I think we're not anticipating any great objections from the bank as it relates to the 400 and, was it 460 or 470? Square feet, but, you know, I think we can move very quickly. Once, once we get the green light, I think we can.
I think it's very important, Doug, I talked about it before, that we go ahead, like Bill says, incorporate it with our work, with their work. So it doesn't create another inconvenience for public.
Sure.
But if we can go ahead, in my opinion, and if the council agrees to go ahead and start negotiation with the bank, get it done and get moving along with the project.
The only question I have, just the money in escrow, if the cost would go up? Or are we locked into this amount?
We would eat it if the cost went above, but I think we did a fairly beneficial estimate.
I bet. Just because it said it had to be done in two years or they take the money back and then we'd have to put it in ourselves, so.
One point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, the sections that are crossed out there, Jeremy, do you want to point to those? That is not required. That is an option that in the event we find it necessary, we have that option.
That of course would restrict left turn, if we added that.
Sure, okay. Everybody on the council, ready to go ahead and let Matt start with this?
Would you point out the second left turn into there or right turn out?
So the right turn out is here.
Right.
There's designated left turn lane here going in.
Okay, how about further up by the pumps?
Right here too, which that's the one we could if we decided to close that off in the future, just start that.
Is there a further one up?
Their main entrance is, yeah, so here's 17th Street, and this is our main entrance here.
Well, your picture didn't pick it up. That's, I see the corner of it. I just, I want to make sure everybody on council saw there's two entrances.
But Jeremy, with the current traffic situation that's there now, all congestion, why would VDOT want a light there somewheres because you have the main entrance right there? People trying to cut across in rush hour, hidden south on Shandor Avenue, I mean, it's.
I think their concern was it would be too disruptive, because really the problem was only narrowed into a small window of a couple of hours in the morning and the evening. And so when they ran through their analysis, in the field, it was warranted just for that rush hour traffic. It is very close to the other light, so.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, so it's.
What was our recent traffic study? What does it say? Congestion wise, is it three to seven at night, five to seven in the morning?
The worst time was what you would expect. I don't, I think it was like between four and six, kind of that timeframe. And then there was the second peak time was in the morning, I guess with everybody coming into town to go to work.
During that peak time though, that's why I was talking about congestion and safety. It might take the aspect of people crossing over to the other place to get sodas and beer or whatever they got.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's still a congestion point for pedestrians.
There's something that's on here.
Mr. Mayor, do you want this on a regular course or do you want this consent agenda for the next meeting?
Do we have to put it on the agenda until we get the information back from Doug, whether the land can be available or not?
Well.
Do you want to, is this just to accept the money?
Yes, sir.
Through the Sheetz? Okay. Just, I would say put it on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I don't see any big issue with it.
I agree.
But I would like to make it a point that we get started immediately to try to negotiate and get things moving.
Watch that.
Spring will be here before you know it. Lisa Holton will.
Needn't know.
But you want us to bring it back to council after we flip it to the bank?
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next comment.
Y'all finished the panel?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item tonight would be the co-ad amendment, the request from the medical center assigned regulations.
Mayor Woodley, Mr. Camp up there. Planning, planning commission's recommended approval, unanimous approval of this. It's in line to similar signage that they have in Winchester. And Mr. Camp, they talked about a potential co-ad amendment that he would recommend.
That's 80% of my summary, but, yeah, that's.
That'd help.
It's been the council. And I mean, I've been to the planning commission, they've vetted it. It's an existing ordinance we have for medical facilities. We just amended it because it wouldn't accommodate what the hospital wanted to do. I think at first we kind of pushed back, it's like, well, these are our regulations, you know, they said, well, we really can't make this work, so we sat down with them. We looked at what Winchester did and other hospitals and the planning commission felt it was perfectly appropriate. And actually, something they felt strongly that we should be doing for the unique circumstance of the hospital for safety reasons. So went to do their public hearing, they approved it. And of course, their approval should have recognition for you guys.
Okay, can we go ahead and put it on advertisement, get it ready, are you canceling?
Yes, sir.
Is it okay with the rest of council? Next thing tonight is our inclement weather policy. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, you know, I don't want to say it's not an overly pressing issue, but I do believe it's a matter that needs to be cleaned up in our, in our employee handbook. If I weren't required to bring it to council, any changes in employee handbook requires council approval. The current policy is listed, is in the summary document. In short, town hall's open all the time during inclement weather. I've had several conversations with, with former manager Joe Walts. I had conversations with various staff and department heads and whatnot. And I was concerned that in the event of, let me back up. So although we have a policy that town hall is open all the time, the reality of it is that department heads would typically find a way of picking up one or two employees. Perhaps people would stay in hotels just to come to town hall in real heavy snow and whatnot. It just, it was, it's an inadequate policy, I guess is the way I look at it. So HR and I, we spent a fair amount of time trying to craft a policy that was, that was not only safe for the citizens, but also did not abuse taxpayer funds and taxpayers' expectations. So what we, what we have in our policy currently is a two-tier system. Tier one, employees whose job requires them to be, be at work during inclement weather, such as plow trucks, et cetera. And then a tier two, which are the employees that would not necessarily be required, perhaps people that collect funds and planning and zoning, et cetera. The reality of it is on big storms like that, no one's coming to town hall anyways, and we don't want people out on the streets and we don't want employees out on the streets. So the policy is, as it's currently written, outlines that. Now, one, one point is that in the event I as, or in the event the town manager decides the storm is severe enough that town hall, that we need to exercise as tier one and tier two and town hall's closed, it is not a punitive measure towards employees. So it doesn't dock employees vacation time in order for them, since they can't come to work. Again, I just didn't think that was a just expectation. And I'll say the employee wanted to come to work and I'm forcing them not to come to work. I don't, I didn't believe they should be penalized. There has been some discussions internally about the image that this sets with tier one employees being forced to work and tier two employees getting paid not to work. What I've tried to do is encourage department heads to pre-plan for a major event and pre-plan maybe some training that they can do at home, whether it be books or videos or login to a website. I'm also instituting a policy where these, these training tools that we have will be part of the evaluation process of all employees and evaluated on an annual basis as far as how many training modules they've gone through. But there, there was discussion about the, you know, the reaction of the tier one employees, especially in the law enforcement and the public works. And the director said, that's just something that, you know, there may be the occasional, right, but it's, it only makes sense to do this. So I'm bringing it before you for consideration. Again, if, if you like this type of policy, you would have to go through a formal vote so I can change the employee handbook.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Manager, did the, did you consult with any other agencies or localities?
Yes, extensively. Yeah, we did extensive amount of research, Hall Tepper, Winchester, Frederick, Leesburg. We got a lot of input and that crafted this language. This language has also been vetted through council as well.
Did I read somewhere where if we eventually close, say an employee doesn't come in, and then we eventually close, they would still have to use their lien if they didn't come in?
If they didn't come in, in other words, if they didn't report to work.
Right.
Correct.
And then we ended up closing.
Correct, because the town hall was open.
Right, got it.
So you're, if it's open, your duty's to be here.
Right.
You choose not to be here, you take a vacation day.
Right.
And if we close halfway through the day because of the inclement weather, I'm sorry you lost your day.
Got it.
Matt, I read through it, it looks very, very good. The tier one employees are essential and they are required to show up for work unfortunately when you have the bad weather. It's just a part of their job description.
Well, and I want you to know that I intentionally used the term tier one and tier two as opposed to essential and non-essential. All employees are essential.
Yes, yes.
And so I wanted to be careful how we crafted that. And so I think the tier one, and by the way, a point, every employee will be notified, whether they're tier one or tier two, and it'll be put in their job descriptions as well.
What I meant by that is public safety, of course, you know, the police officers and, you know, street departments as far as clearance and.
My concern goes to, let's say it's extended, we've had in years past extended periods, like three days for school. In that case, does the same policy apply to three days versus one day or half a day or?
I think that's something we have to take up, Mr. Seelock. I hate to compare this policy to the school closures.
Yeah, they close when it's cold.
I don't think, that's not my intent, but.
We have had extensive.
Yeah, 36, 36-inch snowstorm.
Yeah, you can't do anything.
Again, I think it's a situation where I would call the department heads via phone and say, you know, what are your employees doing at home? You know, can you have something? Is there something they can do? Are they working on their projects? Are they working on planning? Are they working on, you know? So it's not a matter of, it is, it's payday, but again, it's changing the culture. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to change the culture to say, you know, look, we're trying to increase the level of training and experience of our staff. So I'm hopeful that the department heads will embrace this. I do have been in the research stage of researching some very, very, very nice online tools. Now granted, not all employees have computers at home. Not all employees are sophisticated necessarily to access some of these training tools and it's not punitive. In other words, I don't want them to be punished because they didn't do it. But if, you know, it's an opportunity for an employee to get three or four modules knocked down on a one or two day snowstorm, good for him, good for her. So I think that's a case where if I were manager at the time of a massive event, I'd be in consultation with council and it'd be a give and take, you know. That'd be, that'd be how I would handle it. And I assume another manager would handle it similarly.
I know this is your first winter really with, with being the town manager, but I'm just wondering, some of you that have been around for a while, how often has the town closed or delayed opening? I don't feel like I've heard that.
It doesn't.
Very rarely.
Well, my tenure even as public works, we only had one or two.
Right.
When we had the big 42-inch snow, we, we were closed several days, but nobody could move, so it wouldn't make a difference. But I don't think it would be a policy that would be abused. I really don't think so.
Okay. Did you want it on a regular session or consent agenda?
I think we need to put it on a regular, regular session. Let the public be aware of what we're doing and so, because they're going to be the ones that, you know, it needs to know exactly what our policy is. The next item tonight is revenue forecast for 20 through 2023. PJ?
Mr. Mayor, you have in your packet, you're in, actually, he's going to hand out some more. As he's, as he's doing that, we have a revenue forecast. It's a rather voluminous document. It just is what it is. We have a lot of different revenue from a lot of different sources. Council, I think it was, what, a couple of years ago? PJ?
Yes.
Wanted to get a report similar to this. This is, so I've asked Mr. Wilson to kind of just highlight through this and if you have questions or if you already have questions, please, by all means, let PJ just hit the highlights of the.
Sure will. Feel free to interrupt me at any time and I'll answer them as we go through this. So fiscal year 21 revenue forecasting, these are the figures that I'll be using in the fiscal year 21 budget for the most part. Some of them may change a little bit based on recent information, constantly revising these and updating. But basically, it's forecasting. These aren't exact figures. We get information from all sorts of sources and they're subject to change. Monitoring our revenues monthly as we go through. And data used in forecasting is collected from many different, different internal and external sources, I deem reliable and appropriate. I'm using figures from Amp, Ohio for electric. Look at the weather, look at all kinds of different things. Real estate and property values. So the blue line there represents our tax rate. Green lines represent the property values for real estate. And as you see, it dips down from 2007 through 2011 due to the change in reassessment. Comes back up. We had raised the tax rate in 2014 for the police department headquarters, Main Street Extension and Leitron Parkway, that was two cents. Raised a half a cent in 2017, that was allocated toward the police department. In 2019, the revenue we had realized from the reassessments was allocated to the police department as well. Mentioned here that Weldon Cooper's Virginia local tax rates for 2018 shows that the median real estate tax rate for Virginia town is 17 cents for $100. Ours was 13 and a half cents, so we are lower than the median 3 and a half cents. Real estate tax revenue, as I mentioned, we had, during the reassessment, we took the $183,000 from the reassessment along with the $90,000 from West Main Corridor, allocated that in 2019 to the police department. So right now we have a total of $515,500 that's allocated currently annually to the police department. We anticipate that that will be enough to cover a 30-year term loan for the police department headquarters. As you see, our real estate tax revenue is slightly increasing there. Personal property tax, it's comprised of three main sections there. The tax, the vehicle license fee, all of a sudden then is decaus, and then the tax relief that we received from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Personal property tax values, as you see, they're on the rise. We did see a greater rise from 2015 to 2016 of, let's see, oh, I'm sorry. Rate of growth from 2018 to 2019 was 5.22%, which is the second greatest increase seen in the last decade. The increase from 2015 to 16 was greater, but I don't have that listed there. Personal property tax relief. So town receives personal property tax revenue from the Commonwealth of Virginia, not revenue, but relief. The blue line there represents the amount that we received from the Commonwealth of Virginia, $287,000 a year. We've received that every year since 2005 and continue to receive that. The orange line represents our personal property tax relief. We are mandated by the state of Virginia to equalize that relief. And moving here in 2019, we were at 56% for the personal property tax relief rate. 2020, we expect to be 53%. The, again, we are mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia to equalize that. Our goal is to have the orange line meet the blue line. Personal property tax, or personal property revenue, sorry. So blue over there is our tax relief, orange is the actual personal property tax that we receive, and the gray is the vehicle license fee. As you see, our, in the orange there, kind of dips down and comes back up. In 2016, 17, we did start equalizing, well, didn't start, but we re-equalized the revenue received from the personal property tax relief and then our revenue from the decals continues to grow. There is a proposed cut to the state vehicles registration fee. If this, if the state cuts the registration fees in half, we would be mandated. If this, if the state cuts the registration fees in half, we would be mandated to lower our decal fees, or vehicle license fees, sorry about that. We're not allowed to have our license fees higher than the state's license fee. So we would have to cut that. If they cut it down to twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents, we would have to do the same, and it would reduce our revenues by approximately sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars if that passes. Revenue based on tax rate, so the personal property, with the personal property tax relief rate, one cent of personal property tax rate equals nine thousand three hundred forty-two dollars. Real estate, hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars. It's a question I'm asked quite often, and thought it'd be nice to throw it in there. Also, on the bottom there, it shows our rate. So the personal property tax rate, you'll see, was sixty cents in two thousand ten. We raised it in two thousand eleven, and it's remained consistent through two thousand nineteen. Real estate was seven cents in two thousand ten. We did raise it in two thousand eleven due to the reassessments. And then two thousand fourteen, it was Leech Run Parkway and the West Main Connector and Police Department there. And then two thousand seventeen was a half a cent for the police department. Business professional occupational licensing, it's on the upward trend as well. We did see a little bit of a dip in two thousand nineteen. We had a few businesses that, I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen saw an increase, we're expecting it to decrease in two thousand twenty. Had a few businesses closed down, and some new ones are coming in. So we do hope to regain that in two thousand twenty-one, but we will see a dip here in two thousand twenty. The spike that you see there in two thousand sixteen was an effort by the Department of Finance and Planning and Zoning Department to collect on some delinquent business licenses, and that's why it drove up there. Don't expect to see that much again. Meals and lodging taxes, so a number of meals and lodging taxes did increase from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen by seven. Two thousand nineteen, meals tax increased by two accounts. Number of lodging accounts decreased from seventeen to eighteen by one. I expect it to decrease by one again in two thousand twenty, losing the Shindon Motel from Sheetz. Meals tax, steady growth, as you see, the year-over-year for the last nine years, we're showing an average of five point four percent increase year-over-year. It's continuing this trend into fiscal year, into fiscal, into fiscal year nineteen. We're also seeing it here in twenty, we're looking at approximately six percent continued growth. The lodging tax, Commonwealth of Virginia requires a transient occupancy tax in excess of two percent be designated for tourism and travel and marketing, which equates to sixty-seven percent of the town's lodging tax, which is two hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars. Currently, we allocate all of our lodging tax to tourism and some additional funds. I just wanted to point that out a little bit. Lodging tax, we did see a dip there in two thousand fifteen, spiked back up in two thousand seventeen, and we got a little bit of a downward trend again. And right now, projecting that's going to remain the same for two thousand twenty-one as it is for two thousand twenty, but we may see a little bit of a decrease. Being in lieu of taxes, slight decrease in two thousand seventeen. We had a few businesses that had closed down. Some of these businesses reopened in two thousand eighteen, so we're starting to see the growth. Increase of four percent from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen for the pilot collective through utility billing. Two thousand eighteen to nineteen was a seventeen percent increase. We had a lot of new businesses open up. Yes, sir.
BJ, going back to the pilot and the meals tax and those other items there, that, by looking at, it appears to me, that's what, about seven hundred thousand or plus to it that we received from the pilot and the MOU we have on the meals tax and the lodging?
Well, the MOU, yeah, the MOU is the blue line down there, and then the orange line is the, what we collect from the utility bills. So pilot from the utility, from the utility bills is roughly five hundred fifteen thousand, and then pilot from, we received from the MOU is two hundred fifty-eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
Around about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand. The, and we should see a little bit of an increase in that as well, but we only receive a portion of the lodging, well, we receive a portion of the meals and lodging, but it's a smaller portion of the lodging because of the allocation to tourism. So two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, seventeen percent increase due to the new businesses. We're expecting continued growth, but not as drastic as an increase as we saw in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. State aid for the police department, this is something near and dear to commence hard at this moment. So the House Bill five ninety-nine funding from nineteen seventy-nine distributes eight to localities based on the general fund, revenue received by the Commonwealth of Virginia. That's the way it's supposed to be done. The way it actually is done is based on the appropriation ordinance from the Commonwealth. So we're not receiving as much revenue as the House Bill five ninety-nine states. We haven't received that for a number of years. To put it in perspective, from two thousand to two thousand eighteen, the Commonwealth didn't allocate approximately a hundred and seventy-nine million, I think I said, a hundred and thirty-nine million. So we're not receiving as much as we should from the House Bill five ninety-nine, nor as our other localities. So the, we did see a decrease in two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve, relatively stable from twelve to sixteen, and then sixteen and on, we're seeing slight deep, uh, slight increases, sorry. Revenue from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two is anticipated remain level based on information I received at the BML Finance Forum just a few weeks ago. The reason why we're not receiving the funds based on the formula is the appropriation ordinance that the Commonwealth passes. They passed the, this appropriation ordinance, and it supersedes the House Bill. So it is what it is, so we're level at this point with the growth in two thousand twenty-three. Communication tax, it's on the downward trend. Downward trend is mainly from the prepaid calling cards, prepaid calling cards, well, there's not a way to currently tax those. Commonwealth is reviewing those options, and also, they're trying to figure out a way to put taxes on the streaming services, like your Netflix, Amazon Prime, things like that.
No!
Disney Plus.
No! How many streaming services I have?
So the Commonwealth is looking into that until something is done. I expect the communication tax is going to continue to be fine year-over-year. Sixteen through nineteen, we're looking at three point eight percent decrease. Two thousand nineteen was eight point two-three compared to two thousand eighteen. But again, we're just on the downward trend on that until something is done. Bank stock tax, this one's all over the board. It represents two percent of the general fund budget and half a percent of the total budget, so it's not a big figure for us, but I put it in here just to show that how fluctuates up and down. It's based on the deposits placed in the banks. When I say banks, it does not include credit gains or thrifts, but it varies up and down. Projecting a little bit of an increase, but nothing major there. Sales tax, it's on the upward trend as well. The spike that you see there is due to dominion being built. When they were being built, sales tax increased significantly there, come back down, and we're still on the upward trend. Still predicting a slightly higher increase of five point five percent to twenty twenty, twenty to twenty-one, based on additional businesses opening and the current increase seen in revenue. And that is indeed based on the formula that we use from the Commonwealth of Virginia, and also split between the town and county based on student enrollment. Town fines, these are fines issued by the police department. Purpose for this, for issuing tickets is not to generate revenue but to increase safety. We must have a town, a budgeted line item to receive the revenue, so we have to budget something. Kind of shows the up and downs there. The decrease seen in two thousand nineteen and twenty, we believe is attributed to the legislation, legislation that no longer allows holds to be placed on driver's license renewals from failure to pay tickets. So you don't pay your ticket, there's nothing really forcing you to pay, well, there's things forcing you, but the driver's license was a, hold was a good way to enforce that. Visitor center income, it's not a major source for us, but we just wanted to highlight the increases that we've seen there. Again, all town lodging tax is allocated to the visitor's center. The town visitor's center receives revenue from the sales of merchandise, and that revenue is received in the general fund as a whole, and the general fund also supplements the tourism department. The fiscal year twenty revenue, July through December two thousand nineteen, approximately twenty-one thousand, an increase of thirty-eight hundred dollars in the same time period in two thousand eighteen. Again, not a huge source for us, but just something we highlighted. Highway streets and highway streets funding. So our highways and streets, we have four major sources of funding for them. Maintenance funding, this is the money that we receive quarterly from the Commonwealth to repair and maintain our streets. Revenue sharing from the Commonwealth, this is the, these are for projects that they pay fifty percent of for the qualifying and approved projects. We've used this for instance, Leech Run Parkway. We, it's open for two years, we've currently made application for that for the North Royal Avenue paving project, and if we get approved for that, we'll know in April or May, and it'll be approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars, and it pays fifty percent of the project. Primary extension program pays a hundred percent of the approved project. Must be deemed a primary road by the Commonwealth in order for us to get the funding for that. Again, it's something we have to apply for. We've used that for a few different times now on Commerce Avenue, John Marshall Highway, or maybe used it for Fourteenth Street, I can't remember off the top of my head. Smart scale program, this program funds a hundred percent of the highway improvement projects, it does not fund repair or replacement projects. This is what we're looking to have Happy Creek Phase Two funded through. We've obtained a pulmonary engineering that we're going to have done on Happy Creek Phase Two. Hopefully, that'll up our score for the smart scale program, and we will reapply August twenty twenty with funding, or funding, or approval for the program to be announced in February of twenty twenty-one. Just note that work cannot be completed before we receive VDOT's authorization to receive the funding for these programs, so we can't do these projects in advance and then request the funding, we have to do, request the authorization.
Yeah, BJ, if I can interrupt you real quick. As a novice to this inner working, this has been a real eye-opening experience for me. I've had several meetings with VDOT and our public works department, trying to figure out why can't we get additional funds, why can't we allocate whatever and whatever. Long and the short of it is, it'll happen after I'm gone, but I would encourage council to keep, keep, keep in mind the possibility of hiring someone, not hiring them full-time as a consultant, to come in and write some of these applications, who's special, who's a former VDOT person, because it is horribly complicated, it is very confusing, it is, the time schedules are such that they're not convenient. It's atrocious, it's a horrible program, it's a horrible way to fund streets and maintain streets. But I know other jurisdictions are getting a significant amount of additional funds and more money, and having streets put into their primary road network as opposed to our streets, and part of the maintenance program quicker than our streets. So I would encourage in the future, to think about, at the appropriate time, bring in someone to maybe write a couple of applications. I think it'd be money well spent if you can get them in at a hundred percent or fifty percent as opposed to us having to pay for it. Sorry, my two cents.
That's okay, no, you're just fine. So that's the four major funding options that we have for the highways and streets. Just to break down our maintenance funding there a little bit more, this shows the money that we get per lane mile for our principal minor arterial roads and then collector local side streets. It comes up to the total of one point nine million. Leech Run Parkway, there's a little bit of a dispute if that's a primary or secondary road at this point in time, so I'm not sure where that's going to come in at, but.
Well, yeah, dispute, they're calling it a secondary road.
We're not getting anything at this point.
Right, yeah, we're not getting anything at this point.
Except maintenance funds.
Five hundred and twenty-one compared to twelve is a big difference.
Four-lane highway.
Exactly.
Secondary road.
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't included that in.
VDOT's not watching.
Haven't included that in the revenue forecasting at this time.
BJ, before you go back there, after you have me out here, when are they going to release that project, so we can get it on our budget?
Once we get, once we get that, the grass and the pond, that.
I mean, we're already doing it, but we're not getting anything.
I even tried, I even tried to have them allow us to bond it. So what if we bonded it for the, this remaining? Ah, we're sorry.
Okay.
Talk to the night budget.
Yeah.
Can't do it one way.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
This is our highway maintenance funding, as you see, it's been slightly upward trend there. The BML Finance Forum that I went to here recently said that for the next couple of years, it's going to remain level, so I projected it to remain level with an increase in two thousand twenty-three. Leech Run Parkway's additional funding has not been included in this as of yet, because one, I don't know how they're going to classify it, and two, I don't know exactly when it'll be accepted into inventory at this point. But, oh, sorry.
BJ, let me interrupt back, one last comment about highway and streets. Mr. Mayor, as based upon previous conversations with council, we're taking a fairly aggressive program or initiative as it relates to the secondary roads, which is just part of the maintenance program. We don't get any revenue share or smart scale from those roads. Staff made a conscious decision not to spend, not to borrow funds to do any major primary road improvements because of the fact that we can eventually get smart scale annual revenue sharing, fifty percent of the cost. So you should be aware of that when you go through the budget here in the next few weeks, to know that we're just keeping schedule based upon what VDOT's ratings are for the primary roads, but the secondary roads, we are taking a very aggressive.
Are you going to borrow any money for the secondary?
Yes, sir. That's in the budget. Right now, we have allocated four point nine, four point eight for the secondary.
Something along those lines, I think the total with the, with the paving includes about eight million, not paving, but the water, water line.
Yeah, but that's.
Curb gutter, right.
Yeah.
But you're not going to borrow eight million, though.
No.
You're going to borrow a portion of it, is that what you're saying?
Four, right now, we have allocated for the secondary road network to cover paving for secondary roads until twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven. We'll be coming back to council with some options on that, to maybe use some fund balances to pay for the water portion of it, and, you know.
The part, I guess, yeah, good point. Part of the project includes water upgrades, water improvement, curb and gutter, and just painting, so.
The only thing that I have, I think, right now, critical is your deck on Stonewall Drive on that grid, is you've got steel that's showing, and it's got to be something done to it immediately. Salt's just going to corrode that whole deck, and then it's going to need replacement.
VDOT's looked at that.
And they haven't recommended a, a epoxy mix to go.
So we can.
Man, I can't believe that.
We brought it up to a meeting.
I looked at it the other day, and it, it needs something done to it immediately.
Yeah. We can bring it back up, we'll do it internally, I mean, we have discussed it.
All right, electric current sales, the top graph there shows the actual kilowatt-hours build. Two thousand nineteen kilowatt-hours build was the highest year for the previous ten years, if not the highest the town has ever seen. Revenue-wise, we're, don't quite, I mean, it was indeed high, but it wasn't extremely higher. We didn't adjust the rates until, what, February, March of last year, or April? So that's an increase in the revenue. The electric fund is indeed below the three-month reserve balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, about two point three million, but we are beginning to recover on that as we move into, from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. The projected kilowatt-hours is based on normal weather conditions. Obviously, it's going to fluctuate up or down based on the weather. When I use these, when I do these projections, I do use AMP Ohio's projected sales forecast. It's usually fair, fairly close, I mean, as you see, it goes up and down with the weather there. I mean, as you see, it goes up and down with the weather there. But slight increase over the decrease there in sales in 2023, and again, 2024 coming back up there a little bit. Gallons of water sold.
You might want to back up, BJ.
Yes, sir.
That increase in 2019 was due to the surcharge, which doesn't mean we saw any increased revenue. It means we were being charged a higher rate.
We were indeed, but I mean, if you look for 2019, the top line there is our kilowatt-hours. We purchased more electric than we have for the prior 10 years possibly in the history of the town. But 2019 was the most kilowatt-hours that we had purchased, so yes.
Okay, I follow you, but the surcharge was the, we didn't see any extra income.
No, we didn't see any extra income. It's still below our reserve balances because rates were so low for so long. So yes, we've definitely taken it, but we are starting to replenish, but it's slow. Water, so 2016, we saw a major water user come online there. That's what the spike is. They were doing some testing and starting to get their facilities online and working correctly. So then it started leveling off, and then we saw higher usages or higher amount of rain, so it come down. And then the temperatures, ambient temperatures pay a big part in that as well for the lower usages. So that's our gallons of water sold. The water and sewer charges for the 4,000 gallons, as you see, 2010 to 2013, we saw an increase. 2014 to 15, a decrease there. That was when we got the 0% financing for the wastewater treatment plant, so we lowered the sewer rates. We are in the process of having a water and sewer rate study done that will incorporate the water sewer rates, meter sizes, fire suppression, and the connection fees. This study will ensure that the town's rates are properly implemented and adequate to ensure funding of future projects. Hopefully, we'll be coming back to council with those in the next few months, hopefully sooner than that. Sales of water and sewer, again, the spike saw there in 2015 to 2016, the, was due to the industrial user doing some testing. It's come down and come back up in 17 and kind of leveled out there. 19, or 20, 21, expecting a little bit of an increase based on our current rates. The, due to additional users coming onboard. Solid waste. So 2010, 2011, saw a decrease there because of the loss in commercial customers. 2012, 13, we've increased the rates. And then the, we increased again in 2017. You see a little bit of a spike there, and then it's kind of leveled off. Anticipating a loss in commercial customers at some point. Town has been longer taking on commercial customers, but so we're not going to lose them, but it would be done over time. So at this point in time, we're projecting to be fairly level with a decrease in 2022, 2023 possibly. Questions, comments? There is a summary page in there of the spreadsheet that gives the actual figures. If anybody would like to look at it or has any questions, I'm happy to.
What is the percentage of growth that you're projecting for this year?
Percentage of growth overall, going from fiscal year 20 to 2021 is 1.3%.
1.3. It's less than the two that we usually come up with.
Correct, it is. That's across all funds, and a lot of that is with the electric, electric, you know, it's not, it's not going to be as high as last year. The electric was very high for the actual figures, so.
BJ, I just want to thank you for all the work. You guys see 26 pages here. You can imagine how many hours he puts in to assimilate all this. I just think.
Yeah, I don't, I take these to heart and monitor them every month and make sure that we're tracking on target. If there is a problem, the town manager, Matt sees my monthly emails where I'm discussing it, what's going on there. Usually it's good.
Thank you, BJ. Since there's nothing else to come before the council, if I got any discussion, anything we want to talk about? If not, we can just close.